Welcome to Pints and Politics. I'm your host, Dan Parsons. As you know, our regular listeners and viewers, Pints and Politics is all about bringing thought leaders and people who make a difference here in Nebraska around a table and talk about the most important issues of the day. And we do it the way politics ought to be discussed over a delicious Nebraska craft beer. And so it's my joy and pleasure to welcome back to the podcast Lancaster County Commissioner Sean Flowerday.
That's right. Thanks for having me. Yeah. Last time I was here was, I don't know what, year and a half ago, a little more than?
Yeah, way back in 21.
Right.
And with our friend Josh Monahan, the mayor of Norfolk, Nebraska.
Right.
And we talked about all things solar and wind.
Right, right. All things renewable. Yeah.
Yeah, because you've got a great knowledge and history of renewable energy. And that's why we had you on with the mayor.
Right, right. Well, actually, my, so my family, my, my mother was a partial owner in the Crofton Hills Wind Farm Project up in northeast Nebraska. And so I just kind of came up in it and grew up around renewables. And it's something I believe in really, really deeply. It's, you know, it keeps our skies clear, our streams clean, and our economy rolling.
And tax dollars into our conference.
Right, right. You want to talk about real rural economic development that doesn't put any additional, you know, it's no additional kids on the school rolls, right? It's, it's, it's more dollars in rural economies without more services. You don't get that very often.
Well, I appreciate all that. So let's start as we always do.
Sounds great.
At your great suggestion, we picked tonight a good old, dear old Nebraska brew from ZipLine Brewing. And as we pour ourselves, tell us, you've got some knowledge about how this all started.
Great. So my understanding is this beer was designed with ZipLine. It's a, it was a combined effort between the Nebraska University Alumni Association and ZipLine Brewing. And so it's a, what they call a tailgate lager.
Perfect.
Did a terrible pour there.
Oh, we'll edit that out in post-production, Sean. Don't worry about that.
People vote for me for my policy, not for my beer pouring.
And, and it's very appropriate, even though this will air a few weeks after, or a few days after this, it's very appropriate because we're toasting our, our long-lost head coach, Scott Frost. So cheers, my friend.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah, that's a tailgate beer.
It is. It is. You can, I mean, that's a session beer. You could hang out on that for a long time.
Absolutely. Or as some of my friends call it, a lawnmower beer.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Okay, well, as we always do, we'll put notes about dear old Nebraska brew. And if anyone has head football coaching suggestions, toss those in on our, over the airwaves.
I saw last night that Sue's already thrown his hat in the ring. I don't know if that was serious or not, but I got kind of excited about it. He's a smart guy.
Let's put him as defensive coordinator.
Sure, I'm down.
Yeah. Well, Sean Flowerday, the commish, as I like to call you, I think that's appropriate. First elected to the Lancaster County Board of Directors, Lancaster County Board in 2018.
Right.
You've served as chair of the board and a member of the Board of Health throughout the coronavirus pandemic.
Yep.
And I love this, I found this somewhere, Sean, you're a diehard, alternative country music fan.
Right, right. Anything, anything rooted in, you know, Willie Waylon or Merle is kind of my style.
Nice.
Not, not, not a big pop country guy, but, but anything like sort of old time country, anything from, from, you know, before about 1978, and then bands like Drive By Truckers, Wilco, Lucero, Jason Isbell, that kind of stuff.
My friend, the comedian Brad Stewart here in town, has a great riff on, on that. We should put that in. We should find that. But we should have, we should have him on sometime.
He's great.
He's a great, he's a great dude. And so, yeah, and so you've done that, and you're up for reelection.
I am, I am. So I'm 56 days out from, from the reelection, the general election, but you know, who's counting? No, it's, it, the campaign's going really, really well. We're in good shape, I think. We've had a really amazing reception from the community. I think, I think people have been really, really receptive to the campaign's message. And frankly, people are, you know, it's, we focused kind of on, on, on three areas through this campaign. You know, taking action on climate change, increasing access to healthcare, and lowering property taxes. And I think we've had, you know, demonstratable outcomes on all of those things. And I'm pretty proud of the work I've done, frankly.
And I want to drill down on some of those things, but let's back up for a second for our listeners and viewers who may not be familiar with the county board. And I've had a couple of your colleagues on, as you, as you probably know, too. So just remind us what the county board does.
Sure. So I always say the easiest way to think about it is the county board of commissioners is to county government as city council is to city government. We are the legislative body for Lancaster County. There's five of us, five districts. My district is kind of southwest Lincoln, down to about 50, southwest 56 in Roca.
So you have some rule.
I do, I do, I do. And so now, I always, I always use that, that city council analogy. It's not a completely perfect analogy, frankly, because there is no, there is no county mayor, right? There's no county executive. So the county board of commissioners doubles as both the legislative and the executive. So if I'm honest, we spend probably about as much time doing, you know, sort of the administrative capacity of the county as we do the legislative. So, you know, that's, that's kind of the 101 civics lesson on, on county board.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and, and because there's only five of you, I learned this and I knew this. I was trying to get more than two of you in a room.
Right.
And we can't do that.
Right. Well, we could if we brought the, brought in the county clerk as well.
Yeah, and actually had a meeting.
But then it has to be a public meeting and we have to post notice and.
And we probably couldn't drink beer.
Yeah, no, it would be, it would certainly be a violation of the Milk and Cookies Act, and it might be, that's a real act.
Milk and cookies. The audience is laughing, but.
You can, you can look that up. That's a real act. Comes from.
The Milk and Cookie Act.
It's, it's, and it's, it's a stipulation of what, what items basically can be provided at public meetings for consumption. Coffee's always allowed, and that's about it. And it's called the Milk and Cookies Act. Look it up.
Hilarious. Okay. Well, I'm glad, yeah, I'm glad we're able to do this and have some good old Nebraska beer. So, okay, so that's a really good little primer of what the county board does. And, you know, you're not, you don't shy away from the controversial issues. I know that.
Nope.
And, you know, like any public servant, you do, you hear from your constituents. And oftentimes, the only time you hear from your constituents is when they're maybe pissed off about something. And, but that's, that comes with the territory.
Right, absolutely. The first, the first rule of getting elected is, is that day one, any decision you make, you're going to be wrong. So you're going to be the stupidest person anyone ever met from day one. So, yeah.
We'll talk about some of the things that you've done the last few years, and then we'll dive into some of that.
So one of my top priorities always has been and always will be taking action on climate change. Climate change is an existential threat to not just our community, but every community out there. We've got to move on this. We've got to find new ways to address this. So I sit, I'm, I'm, I'm the county representative on the Climate Smart Collaborative. So this is, this is a, a group that meets from members from the university, from LES, from the city of Lincoln, from Lancaster County, and from LPS. We've been talking together and finding new ways to, to work together to increase energy efficiency in public buildings, to find new opportunities, new locations, and new ways that we can install infrastructure for electric vehicles. Try to be able to build on that in Lancaster County. Try to just generally lower, lower operational, you know, carbon footprints of these big, you know, giant public entities. And then finally, finding new ways to try to bring in renewable energy options into Lancaster County.
Like our friends with Ranger Power?
Right, right, exactly. So I've, you know, I've, no secret, I think it's probably the thing I'm best known for is, you know, I've, I've worked to try to encourage renewable energy development here in Lancaster County.
You've been a leader, yeah.
Through both solar and wind development. You know, and we've also tried to work to maybe, I, I'd always consider myself really, really pro-growth. I really, really want to see new industry, new, new, any new opportunity for economic development coming into our community. Really, the only thing I've ever worked against on that front would have been the chicken farm up by, in the Malcolm and Raymond area. And frankly, that had, there was a lot of water quality and water quantity concerns up there, which wasn't prepared to take a vote saying that, you know, the high school that was going to be right next door might be pulling sand through their pipes if we installed, let the chicken barns be built up there. So.
Wrong project, wrong location, wrong time, right?
Wrong, wrong location, more than anything else. I don't even necessarily have a beef with the project. And I'm not, I'm not universally against, you know, production agriculture or large scale feeding operations on any front. There are others that make perfect sense. You know, it, I mean, we, we approved one in Waverly that no one ever talked about because there never was any controversy there because, because the location made sense. People in the community wanted it and just was barely in the news at all.
And a huge operation.
Right, it was a massive operation, and it just sailed through because frankly, it made a lot of sense. So, you know, I've, I've tried to work to keep polluting industries from our, you know, from our county. And I've tried hard to bring new opportunities, new green energy and green economy opportunities into Lancaster County.
Because like you said, not only is it benefiting the environment, it is benefiting the economy as well.
Right. It's a massive boost to the economy. We're sitting, Lancaster County sits on about 280 days of sunshine every single year. And on top of that, we are right here in the middle of the Saudi Arabia of wind. That's a cliche. Everyone's sick of hearing that line, but it doesn't make it not true.
That's right.
Right? We have so much opportunity. And what production agriculture means is changing. It will change and it has to change as we move forward into the future. You know, we've, we've run, for the last 50 years, we've run our rural economy on basically corn, cows, and soybeans. And there's not a thing wrong with that, but we've got to diversify. We've got to find a way to bring in other new sources of, of capitalizing on the resources we have.
Well, and not only that, but it benefits the county from, on the tax basis.
Absolutely. It's, it's, find me another way to bring in more rural economic development that, like I said earlier, doesn't put, you know, new children in the school system, that doesn't put another drain, that doesn't cost more services. Because every time, every time you, you, you create jobs, job growth is amazing. We want them. We need them. But those people that are going to require services. A wind, a windmill doesn't require services. Solar panels don't require services. That's rural economic development. It's just a win. It's just a flat win for the people who are already there.
And to be fair, the controversy that, that has occurred on some of those projects is, you know, some people from the city have moved out to the, to the suburbs, if you will.
Sure.
And, you know, they, they think building those facilities, those, those farms is not what they signed up for.
Right, right.
And, but you've done a, from my perspective, and I, as you know, I've seen it pretty up close.
Right, right, right.
You've made those accommodations.
I really think we have. You know, it's, it's, no one, so in, in the case of, of, of the solar project, no one is ever going to be living closer than three football fields to a solar project. You know, I live here in the city. I'll tell you what, there's a, there's a lot of different, there's a lot of things maybe I wish my neighbors here in the city didn't do within three football fields in my house.
But you don't have a lot to say about that.
There's a lot of busy roads that I maybe wish weren't there within three football fields in my house. That, yeah, like, like you said, that we don't necessarily have any say about. And so I, I really do think that, you know, three football fields, like 300 yards, that's pretty good in terms of distance from, you know, the outside wall of someone's property to where these projects can't be built. And it's far more than that for wind. You know, for wind, for a 500-foot turbine, it's three and a half times the height of the turbine. So that's, so that's, you know, 1,500, what, 17, 17, 1725. Yeah, I can't, no, I can't do math.
You're, you're way ahead of me, Sean. As, as everyone knows, I don't do math. I'm in PR, not mathematics. But anyway, those have been, I've watched you up close. And you've been a leader on that.
My pleasure. Thank you.
And you've done some good things. So what else? What else are you working on and?
I mean, you, you mentioned earlier, obviously, so I serve as, both, both the city council and the county board commissioners have a representative on the Board of Health. Ever since day one, the, my first, my first county board meeting ever, I, you know, we, we got our committee assignments and I found out, oh, you've got a Board of Health meeting tonight. Oh, okay. All right, fine, fair enough. So since day one, I've been the Board of Health member. Obviously, no one anticipated.
No one knew, yeah.
No one knew what was coming. No one, no one knew where this was going. And so, yeah, in, in, in the year of 2020, I spent, I pretty much spent, spent 2020. I was, I was the county board chair that year. And then I was also the Board of Health member, which meant, put me kind of at the, the center of county-city vaccination efforts, trying to, trying to work, work with our public health director, work with the mayor's office, and try to coordinate the local coronavirus response. By and large, we've done actually quite well as a county. We have had significantly, just slightly, just slightly more than, than half the number of COVID deaths that a county of our size, on average, would have normally had. We led the state in vaccinations. We've led the state in booster shots. I'm really proud of the work we've done. And frankly, our community, I mean, this Lincoln Lancaster County is an incredible community. They're very civic-minded. The vast majority of our population were more than happy to do what they needed to do, to stay home, to socially distance, to get the shots, to wear the mask. By and large, they were happy to do it. And I, I thank our community because it, like, yes, I think we had some good leadership. I think we had some good planning. We had some really, really good citizens doing their part the whole way through.
People did. For the most part, yeah, we came out really, really well.
Our community, and I mean, we've been rated, you know, time and again, as, as one of the communities that has, that bounced back the fastest in terms of, of, of our economy, that has, that has been able to get back to whatever normal looks like anymore, as quickly as possible.
Right. Okay, so as you know, I've been around the political game for a while here in the state. And it, come election time, you know, it always kind of boils down to the economics.
Right, absolutely.
And so budget, taxes, where are we at on the county?
Really, really happy to, you know, to say that for the second year running, we've, we've actually been able to lower the county property tax levy. Now, I'm not going to say that that offsets other increases that happened in other political subdivisions. And for some people, over the last two years, valuations have still gone up. But we have been able to successfully start chopping down, frankly, we've been able to get, get the county property tax levy marching in the right direction, is the phrase I keep using. And I expect we'll probably be doing another decrease next year. So we did a $3 million decrease last year. We did a little over a million dollar decrease this year. And I would expect to see something similar next year as well. So we have been able to actually get some property tax relief here at a time when frankly, it's really needed. I mean, it's, you know, property taxes are really, really hard on working people, on seniors living on a budget. It's, it's, it's really difficult.
And I assume that's one of the top things you hear going door to door.
Always is, always is. And, and is always truly, when, when the county commissioners, they're getting together, it is always one of our top priorities. It's always one of our top concerns. You know, we, we set out from the beginning this year when we were crafting this year's budget. We said no new FTEs on property taxes, period. And we held to it. And I'm very proud of that.
FTEs?
Sorry, using jargon here.
That's all right.
Full-time employees. No new full-time employees on property taxes. And we were able to stick to that. So there are no, that we, we, we did add five new full-time employees in, in the budget. All of them were able to be offset through some other reduction somewhere else in the budget and did not increase the property tax rolls.
Well, and, and that is significant because we are growing.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. A community, I mean, we, you know, we grew by 30,000 people in the last 10 years. That's 30,000 people who need new services, who are driving on the roads, who, you know, needed, needed the public health department to come through for them this year in different ways. And, you know, who maybe require, require different things from their local government.
So, and that reminds me of another topic that seems like it always comes up during election year, whether it's county or city, even state, the condition of our roads and bridges and all that. Where?
Very, so in, after the 2019 flooding, that was kind of our low watermark, right? Or actually, I should say high watermark.
Speaking of climate change.
That really wasn't meant to be a pun. I feel bad about that already. So, so we, we had, following that, we had about 60 bridges on the scour critical or scour susceptible list. We had 29 bridges closed in the county. We've been able to get about, right now, we only have, it's eight, maybe seven as of like yesterday, bridges closed. Check back with me tomorrow and I'll, I'll let you know if, if we're able to announce the reopening of another one. So we're down into single.
From, from that.
From 29, from 29 closed, we're down into single digits in, you know, three and a half years. And that's actually a pretty big, that's a pretty heavy lift when you consider, I mean, the average bridge is probably coming in around $300,000, $400,000. So these are, these are large projects.
But just to be clear, so most of those closings were a result of that flood?
Most of those closings, I mean.
Or was it, or is it just the natural?
The flood pushed them over, over the edge.
Yeah.
With so many of these bridges, with so much of the infrastructure issues of the county, we're talking about WPA era bridges, right? We're talking about, about, about bridges that were built on federal money from the Roosevelt, Truman, and Eisenhower era. I mean, a lot of these bridges have, have, you know, timber struts through them. I mean, really, we're talking, we're talking some pretty old infrastructure here that frankly, there's not enough property taxes in the world to be able to replace all of them all in one go, right? We'd never be able to manage it. No one could. We could, you could max the levy and it wouldn't do, get the job done. So we have to prioritize. We have to obviously pick, pick bridges with, with the, you know, on farm-to-market routes, on school routes, on high-traffic routes. We have to prioritize those. And so, yeah, following the 2019 flooding, we had, we had 29 bridges closed. And I'm very, very happy to say we have that number far down, down into the single digits now. We also have been able to replace about approximately half of those 60 or so bridges that were on the scour critical or scour susceptible list. So we are, we are truly making progress on that front.
Oh, interesting.
Not to mention a whole bunch of, you know, additional road maintenance and rebuilding Saltillo a couple of times while the South Belt Lake goes through because those state trucks have just, just, you know, pulverized Saltillo Road.
Bridges, taxes, roads, climate. I assume, I know that there's a few dollars rolling into the state from the federal government. The task that you guys have in picking where those dollars go, talk a little bit about that.
So, yeah, you, I assume you're referencing the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, is what everybody calls it. The ARPA funds that are coming down from the federal government. ARPA is a, I mean, talking about WPA era, you know, style funding.
Yeah, this is our.
It really is. This is, this is generational funding. You're not going to see this again. This isn't likely to ever happen in any of our professional times ever again. Yeah. Right, no, it's, I mean, this is the kind of thing that you save only for really large events, frankly, like COVID. So ARPA, ARPA has meant, I mean, it's obviously, the state of Nebraska has received more than a billion dollars in ARPA funding. And that, and the state legislature's been distributing that out on a million projects. But local governments received ARPA funding too, and it was all distributed by population. Lancaster County got just a hair under 62 million. The city of Lincoln got just right around 45 million. So when, when it became clear that those distributions were coming down to us, myself, some of the commissioners sat down with members of the Lincoln mayor's office, the mayor herself, actually. And, and we started, we started crafting a plan for our community, both sort of a joint plan from the county and the city perspective. We wanted to try to avoid duplication of efforts. And the phrase we kept using is we want to try to get every side of the barn painted once.
I like that. Speaking of rural, I like that. And by the way, I, again, just from an outside perspective, I like the cooperative arrangement that, because it just doesn't happen naturally between you and the city.
It doesn't, no, no.
And you work well.
And they're really, really good partners and always have been through multiple administrations. Lancaster County, the city of Lincoln have for years had really quite a good working relationship over the years. So we sat down early, early in the ARPA money process and we started drafting out a, a plan together. Just due, due to the nature of, of some of the powers that, that the legislature has imbued in Lancaster County, we are, we are better able to address certain issues like mental health funding, human service funding, behavioral health funding. And the city is far better to, and due, due to certain things that are in the city charter, they are better equipped to handle things like the rental assistance and small business grants that went out. And just really, by and large, the city money was more focused on, on economics, I would say. And the county money was more focused on sort of the human side of the pandemic response. We both had money going to the public health department. We both had money going to tourism, to hospitality. But, you know, so we focused our, our dollars largely in, so we, we, we took 15 million and we put it into, we called nonprofit assistance. We've, we've already had this entity called the, the Human Service Joint Budget Committee, the JBC. And so this, this, this committee distributes about $2 million a year of city and county human service funding to local nonprofits every year. We already had that entity in existence. So we just, we used that blueprint, that model to distribute this nonprofit assistance funding. Broke it up into four different areas: basic needs, victim safety, victim safety and violence prevention, behavioral health, and racial and ethnic disparities.
Nice, nice.
So we did that with sort of the first 15. We used 6 million to create a family resource center that's focused on juvenile behavioral health, youth behavioral health. The idea is we're trying to, we're trying to provide services, try to provide programming for at-risk youth in crisis before they ever reach the, you know, the, finding themselves, a point where they find themselves crosshairs with the law and end up in juvenile detention. So this is all about juvenile detention alternatives.
I so appreciate that. I, I serve on the board of Cedars and I'm very aware of the need, the increasing need of juvenile services here, here in our city and county.
Yeah, absolutely. Cedars was, was, was one of the recipients of the nonprofit assistance.
Thank you, yes, thank you.
A big fan of Cedars, big fan of it. So before, before I was on the county board, I was actually, I was the state administrator for a child welfare service provider as well, and have done a lot of work with Cedars and think very, very highly of, of everything they've done over there.
Jim Blue does some pretty important work over there.
They do really great work. So we, we also, we put $10 million into, I mean, the, the county ARPA money is, I mean, it's really sort of a soup to nuts operation. We went, we, we cover a lot of ground. We put $2 million into rural water, $2.5 million into culvert replacements, just to help sort of more county infrastructure. And maybe, maybe the most exciting part of it to me is we put $10 million into a rural broadband project.
Yes.
So we are, this is, this is rural broadband development. For the county condo system to lay fiber optics throughout rural Lancaster County is going to reach 50% of everybody who lives out, out in rural areas. And when I say rural areas, I mean everywhere that isn't Lincoln, Nebraska.
Well, and I don't think a lot of people recognize this. And we've done a couple of episodes, at least one episode, on rural broadband access and doing some work for some of those folks now. And I don't think people realize, I mean, here we are, we're here in, in the Haymarket and Fuse co-working. And some of the fastest internet in the city is right here where we sit. And that's an incredible story. But, but you can go just a few miles outside of the city and you can't get Netflix.
Right, right. No, you're down, you're down to 2005 level technology, at least. And it should, it should be said that as of this year, Lincoln, Nebraska now has, if not the fastest internet in the country, second fastest, only behind Kansas City. We even took Austin last year. Kansas City is still beating us in download speeds, but we actually took Kansas City in upload speed. So it is, it is, the, the level of technological infrastructure that we enjoy in the city is truly world-class. I mean, it really is truly some of the best you can get anywhere.
Absolutely. And so 10 million to help broaden that.
Right, right. So the, the idea, the term we keep using is we're trying to future-proof the county. We're trying to lay these, this fiber optics out there so that that kind of growth can keep continuing. The, the way the city of Nebraska has grown, we've tried to grow out into the county and present, you know, put, put that fiber optic infrastructure there to get everything ready to go for that continued growth out there. The really exciting thing is, just this last week, we submitted some new grants to, to the federal administration coming from the bipartisan infrastructure bill. That means that if, if we get those matching dollars for this project, we could be reaching 85%. So up from 50% to 85% of everybody who lives in Lancaster County outside of the city of Lincoln.
Well, and, and again, because of the pandemic, so many more people, so, so many more people are working remotely.
Right.
And some of those people won't go back to a, a normal work setting. But even if they do, there's still that opportunity to, to bring more people into our county from, from Kansas City, from Dallas, from, you know, wherever, Chicago, to have a lifestyle that is much different.
Right, absolutely.
But still be able to have that broadband connection and work wherever you want.
Absolutely. And this has been, I mean, it's, it's been a major detractor for anyone who wanted to start a small business in rural areas. You know, I mean, again, talk about rural economic development, you know, this is, this is key infrastructure that could not have been done without, you know, without a real public investment. So that's one of the things that I'm really, really excited about.
And agriculture, the development of, of need for broadband in agriculture.
Right. And really, we're one of the few, I mean, we're one of the few counties in the state that is lucky enough to have the opportunity to build out from, from what the city of Lincoln has already done and the opportunities that are already here in our community. There aren't many communities that are going to be able to get this kind of rural broadband development really anywhere else. So it's, it's, it's really exciting. And I've been, been pretty pumped about it as well.
Well, that's really cool. Well, I don't want to cut short of the opportunity for you to tell our viewers and listeners if they want to be supportive or learn more about your campaign, where, where do they find you?
www.shaunflowerday.com. My email address is shaunflowerday@gmail.com. You can either send me an email, check out the website. It's, everything about my campaign is, is right up there. And so, no, it, any, anyone who wants to help is very welcome.
I know that you're pounding the pavement, going door to door, all those things that politicians do.
We've knocked about 14,000 doors so far this campaign. It's, 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 I'm trying to, I'm trying to hit Anna Wishart's numbers. She always leads me by about, by about 1,500. She's just, she's the best ever out, out there. And I'm always chasing her, her door-knocking numbers. And I can't.